This Planning Commission meeting, it is October sixteenth at six P M. I'm gonna start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. My name is Dan Burke, I'm the current Chair for the Douglas County Planning Commission. All have allowed the commissioners to introduce themselves on my left.
Jacob Gibbs.
Tim Allen.
Andy Owens.
Michael Whitmer. And then if staff would introduce themselves?
Josh Gibson, Senior Planner.
And Jeff Flairbuck, I'm the Planning Manager.
Alright, there is, as they were stating as you guys came in, and if you haven't, please do, there's a sign in sheet in the back, along with some agendas, I believe, in the back. So please, if you want to speak tonight or someone, make sure you sign in. First item on is the minutes from our previous meeting, which was September eighteenth. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve last month's meeting.
Second.
Okay, new and second, any other discussion? All be in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
I'm gonna refrain.
You got one abstaining, everyone else aye? Okay, on to the first item. So the first item is a quasi-dugist hearing from I E Engineering. This is Planning Department File Number twenty-five dash zero-two-four. This is a referral of a request for a major amendment to Planning Department File Number twenty-four dash zero-one-eight. Plan Development said amendment creates a total of twenty-eight lots instead of fourteen lots on thirty-one point one-one acres instead of nine point zero-one acres as previously requested. Again, this is Planning Department Number File twenty-five dash zero-two-four. Do any commissioners have any conflict of interest, ex parte, or any site visits?
No.
None being heard. So qualified parties, we do have a qualified party list. In favor, we have Winchester Farm LLC, Carl Kaufman, the title holder, I E Engineering applicant, applicant's representative, neutral, City of Roseburg opposed, Bonnie, I'm not even gonna try to pronounce your last name. Thank you very much, on behalf of Saddle Butte Estates, H O A. Malcolm D. May LLC, Dennis Fran Strack. Dorothy Bear, C J and Son Hyde, Carolyn Williams are opposed. Those outside notice area who need to be qualified, if applicable, opposed was Beth Griffin, Angela Ollinger, Richard and Janice Wilkin, Leonard and Terry Huffman, Frank Mesa, Todd and Kristen Coens, Ryan and Kim Dustin, Jim and Mary Evans, Gary and Dennis DeLong, Eric and Shannon Johnson, Christine Scott and David and Victoria Hox. So if there is someone on here that should be on there that would like to speak tonight, I ask that you stand up and speak and give me your name and your address. So is there anyone else that wasn't named on there that would like to speak tonight? Okay, come on up and give me your name and address, and if you're, this would be those in favor, or, I'm sorry, opposed. Sorry, go ahead.
Bruce Sconce, I live on four oh two Martha.
Is there anyone else? Thank you. Okay, come on up.
Barry Whitworth, two sixteen Strauss Avenue.
Barry?
Whitworth, W H I T W O R T H.
Okay, thank you.
Robert Nanna Rippey, one-one-five Martha Drive.
What was your last name again?
Rippey, R I P P Y.
Tim Bear, H O A President Winchester Creek Association, five oh four Winchester Creek Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, those are all those that opposed. Okay, did we have anyone else in favor that would like to speak tonight? Anyone else that would be neutral that would like to speak tonight? We've got a lot of folks here tonight, so we're gonna put a three-minute time limit on. And that'll be per individual. If someone's gonna repeat the same thing, we just ask that you come up and basically say the same thing. So we try not to narrow it down, but we have a lot of people here tonight, so we wanna give everyone a fair chance to speak and so on, so. Alright. Okay, I think we are ready for the staff report. Good evening Chair, Honorable Councilor, Commissioners. I am submitting Exhibits one through thirteen. Please note that on the submission that you guys received last week, there was two aerial maps mentioned, there's only one, so that one's been stripped through. Okay, this is a major amendment, Planning Department File Number twenty-four dash zero-one-eight. The purpose of the major amendment application is to allow for an increase in the number of total lots from fourteen to a total of twenty-eight lots. Plan development is allowed in the R one Single Family Residential Zone per Chapter Five of the Douglas County Land Use and Development Ordinance, or L U D O. The first planning decision for the subject property occurred in twenty-sixteen to create the Winchester Valley Plan Development consisting of twenty-one single-family dwellings to accommodate occupants focused on low-impact environmentally conscious living to be clustered within a three-point-zero-one acre unit of land. The Winchester Valley Plan Development then underwent a major amendment in twenty-twenty-four. This amendment changed the number of twenty-one single-family dwellings to fourteen individual single-family lots. A major amendment to Plan Development twenty-four dash zero-one-eight is being sought through this proposed project. The Douglas County Land Use and Development Ordinance at Section five point one hundred establishes the purpose of a plan development. The purposes of a plan development are to provide a means of creating harmonious planned environments through the application of flexible and diversified land development standards, to encourage the application of new development techniques and technology which will result in a superior living or development arrangements, to promote the efficient use of land to facilitate more economic provision of housing, circulation systems, utilities, and their maintenance, to promote energy conservation and use of renewable energy resources, to preserve to the greatest extent possible significant landscape features and to utilize such features in a harmonious fashion, and to provide for more usable and suitably located open space and recreation facilities than would otherwise be provided under conventional land development procedures. To meet the plan development requirements, the applicant is proposing to build container-style residence that are relatively new development technique and technology built to increase energy efficiency and to be fire resistant. The layout of the plan development is designed to preserve and enhance significant landscape features to dedicate twenty-four point three-four plus or minus of the thirty-one point eleven plus or minus acres as permanent open space and to construct two nature trails and three picnic areas. There are additional applicable criteria that need to be reviewed. That would be L U D O Chapter Four, Land Divisions. Review of the applicant's request is subject to Section four point zero-zero-zero to Section four point one hundred. Other provisions, review of the application is also subject to compliance with L U D O Article twelve, the R one Single Family Residential Zone, policies and provisions of the Roseburg Comprehensive Plan, the City of Roseburg, and the Douglas County Urban Growth Management Agreement and Supplemental Standards, and the general planning principles found in L U D O Chapter One, Section one point zero-two-five. As of this, as of the writing of this staff report, twenty-one comments from seventeen individual properties were received. All comments received show concerns or opposition to the proposed project. These comments are comprised of numerous sections including traffic concerns, property values, neighborhood character and livability, fire danger, environment, wetlands and wildlife, drainage, utility, and infrastructure strain, density, school capacity, and local need for housing. Our recommendation, based upon the findings, planning staff recommends approval of a major amendment to Planning Decision twenty-four dash zero-one-eight, set amendment to create twenty-eight total lots instead of fourteen lots on thirty-one point one-one acres instead of a nine point zero-one acre as previously requested, which meets the criteria for Chapter Four, Chapter Five, and Chapter Three of the Douglas County Land Use and Development Ordinance. I'm through with my staff report. Thank you. Okay, at this time, if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to come up and give testimony? Yes, state your name, address, where you are.
I'm Carl Kaufman. I, I live in Vancouver, twenty-four oh one G Street, Vancouver, Washington. I was born in Myrtle Point, Oregon, about sixty miles to the west of here. When I bought this property from Sid Lichen, he was, he made me tell him I was born in Myrtle Point because he said, "I can't sell this to a Portland developer. I won't be able to show my face again." So I say that to hopefully just kinda use his wisdom on that, I guess. It seems to me like this, so Winchester Ridge was a project that I developed about two thousand and eight. I remember that because oh eight was a really bad year. We sold half the lots and we were finished in the second half and everything just stopped. So when we finished it, we had, we sold lots very slowly through the rest of the next few years, and just sold the last one a few years ago, actually. And this property, at the end of it, has always been a question of mine, what should I do? I'm sure that most of the people here aren't here because it's being developed, they're here because, because we're talking about putting container homes on it. And I'm in the container home business now. So I'd like to start this all with just a show about container homes. I think I'd just like to put all that to bed right up front, and then I'll talk about the other themes in the, on the, you know, the adverse side of this conversation. So if we can start this up, this is, we've shortened this up, I think it's about eight minutes. It'll, it was, a lot of it is me talking because there was a film taken that is on our website that was easy for us to grab. We tried to cut it down to ours not too long and wordy. But just so we all know, the building that it shows up front, and there's a video about it, and then it'll just go through some different pictures of homes, and then it'll stop and I'll talk again. The, the, the unit it's showing is called the Deluxe Model. It's two containers with a bridge that we call built between them. And the bridge, you'll see it, it's eight feet wide, and we make them different widths and all that stuff. It's a two-bed and one-bath home. That building was built in two thousand and eighteen. It's, it's between Oregon City and Canby, where we started our business. And, but the movie was taken in two thousand and twenty-one, just to give a sense of how old that was. It was the very first one that we built. I'm not as proud of it as I am of the more current ones. And whoever's running, is that you? If you want to start that up, I'll just kinda stand aside so people can see around me.
Hi, I'm Carl Kaufman, and we're standing on a lot in New Era. New Era is just south of Oregon City, between Oregon City and Canby. This is a site of an old lumber mill that was removed years ago. It's also the area that we incubated Relevant Building Company. We replaced an old pole barn that was here with a new pole barn that's now here, and inside of that, we constructed the building behind me and the building off to my side over here. The Deluxe right here is made up of two shipping containers with a bridge between them. The bridge is all stick-built. So here we are inside the Deluxe River Model, built by Relevant Building Company in Oregon City. The, this model is, is designed with this high bridge section in it. It adds a huge amount of volume, architects would call it. It, it's nine hundred feet, feels like eleven. It's a really, really comfortable space. We put the kitchen and the bathroom all in one container, so all the plumbing is kinda localized. This section between the two containers can be spread. This is eight feet, they can be twelve feet, and that becomes a two-bed and two-bath. They can be fourteen feet, and that becomes a three-bed and two-bath. Or they can stay at eight feet, and it's a two-bed and one-bath. All different options, there's so much you can do in the center section. I like this because it's not all just container. I really like that this has this wood accent, kinda feels like a northwest kind of a home. So this is, this is a very comfortable feeling for, for me to have. It also has clear story windows up above, so it gets a lot of light in. And we've actually motorized a couple of those, so we can just push a button and vent that out. A lot of customizable options in, in all of the homes that we build. But this in particular does a lot of flexibility. So this kitchen area is designed to take advantage of the view that we have out here towards the river. This, this kitchenette area here is, feels like a booth. We used reclaimed lumber that came out of a barn being built in, or being torn down in La Grande. We fabricated this, it'll hold about surprisingly nine people there, which is a pretty good crowd for a small space. One of the misconceptions about container buildings is that they're all the same. I don't watch a lot of reality TV shows about containers, but a friend of mine asked me to watch one one time. A felon's wife were demonstrating the container that they had built themselves in Oklahoma. Did a good job, but it's interesting that you could tell, since I have a trained eye for this, that there was literally no insulation to speak of in it. You cannot take a container home and treat it like a wood-framed home. It cannot be insulated with fiberglass insulation. If it is, it will, it will get condensation, it will mold, it will turn into a mass. So if somebody doesn't use closed cell spray foam at the right quantities, they're really gonna have the trouble in it. So the thermal barrier in a metal container is, is very, very important. We wanted a lot of glass out this side of the window. On the backside, we've got a train track, we wanted zero glass over there. One of the abilities that we have is to be able to move windows around very easily. So we can enlarge them, make them smaller, we can do a lot of things with them, we can move doors around. This is the, this is the living room, comfortably holds six or seven people. And then as we walk over here, you see, you know, we're big on barn doors. This is our bathroom, it's got a four-foot shower, washer and dryer, typical vanity and, and other items in there. So I gotta tell you, it feels a little bit weird to be in the bedroom with you guys, but here we are, we're in the master bedroom. It's a little bit tight in here, remember, this is the eight-foot bridge that we're in. So if I was in the twelve-foot, which is the, the smallest one shown on our website, or the fourteen-foot, the larger version, this room would simply be bigger. But back here, we have a walk-in closet that's about six foot deep, it's very comfortable, very large. So this is the second bedroom in this house, and you can see it's got a reach-in closet here, it's a very comfortable space. This particular building is the most complicated I have to explain to people, and I like the opportunity to be able to do this on video. But the merits of this is that this unit is just a smaller footprint, right? It's a very livable footprint. I don't feel like I'm in a real small space, and I could comfortably live in this space. This unit costs maybe two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, setting on somebody's site, all done. And we think that is a price that is competitive to wood, given the design, certainly given the durability and some of those elements that we can, that containers just carry. But, but the Deluxe is probably one of our most popular units, people really are drawn to this style. We also make this in a mini version, like a mini-me. The Mini Deluxe is a twenty-foot Deluxe instead of a forty-foot Deluxe. It'll be a one-bedroom, one-bath unit with a loft on it, which kinda takes some of the sting out of that second bedroom that you don't have. So we're really excited about that, it's a, it's a really good unit for an A D U. It's, it's a unit that I'll be building at the coast on a very small lot that that fits well on. We also sell our homes in four different phases, so somebody can buy just a shell with windows cut in it. They can buy a watertight shell with windows in those holes and, and a little roof over it. They can buy something that's built through insulation, which means it has electrical and plumbing that are roughed in and insulation sprayed over, or they can buy it completely finished. But, so our, our price list on our website builds all that out, but it never includes a price of land.
So. I think, so we get all of our permits for our houses through the State of Oregon. We permit them through, we permit them through the Building Codes Division. They come to our shop in Oregon City, they inspect them there, then we move them out to the job site, where we got a permit locally for the foundation and the Planning Commission, planning, the planning approvals for the house and all that kinda thing. So the reason I wanted to show that is because we got about fifty different types of homes that we've had permitted now, and we got about a hundred that we've built, and they're around Oregon. We can build them in Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. We're now sending them up to the north slope of Alaska. I get a call from those guys, they're, you know, they're experiencing permafrost melting, they're trying to find things that can house people, they don't have any supplies around. So, you know, there seems to be a clear demand for them. Our shop is right now full of containers being cut up for somebody. I wanna, I wanna just sorta talk through some of the themes that we've, that we've heard from neighbors around there. So I've listed, you know, everybody's gonna categorize these differently, but I think we tried to go through and look at, at all of the comments that were taken, and how many of them there were, and what they were related to. And so these were sorted by the large, the largest number at the first, and they worked their way down. So the first one was, was a conversation about traffic increase and safety. Let's just go to the next slide. So this, 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 you know, that dark streak right to the middle, it looks like a snake, is, is Strauss, where it hits Highway ninety-nine. And Strauss is a urban collector, or something, urban minor collector street. When we built Winchester Creek, we could've narrowed it up, but we built it to the same width because we knew that we had property in the back that was eligible to hold two-hundred homes. And, and based on its zoning, right, it was R one zone. So we said, "Well, we don't know what we're gonna build back there, but let's make this road wide enough that it can, it can take the traffic." We were not required to build it that wide, but we did. We were not required to add sidewalks, but we put sidewalks on it, sidewalk on one side because we wanted to have, have people communicating and walking back and forth in the street. And likewise with, with streetlights, the county didn't require them, but we put them on because, again, we wanted pedestrian traffic out there. I've never really known what we were gonna build in the back. Let's see, but I, but I believe in terms of, from a traffic and safety standpoint, you know, if, if, if Winchester Ridge had never been built because somebody argued that we couldn't get traffic up Strauss, it, it is just an extension of Strauss now, right? So in my mind, an argument for, about traffic doesn't have a lot of merit. And we're only getting less than thirty houses where we could, where it's owned to put two-hundred houses. So the next slide is gonna talk a little bit about why, about why I'm doing container houses. There's two things going on here. One is, I honestly don't know if container houses are gonna be better financially back there or not. But, but at one time, we built houses on Winchester Creek, and, and my sons helped me build them, and we also built them up in Winchester Ridge, which is up behind Costco. I developed that as well. And, you know, we, we've always kinda thought about climate change as being something that we wanted to build to avoid issues with. And so we were building houses that would be double-walled houses, extra, extra, a lot of extra insulation, really tried to build them efficiently. And what we learned is that, you know, they didn't save that much money, it cost more money to build. We didn't wanna build anything different. And, and when we got done building the house and selling all, we made it, what we would've made it, we just sold a lot. So we said, "Well, let's not worry about the house, it's built a lot, but let's find a different house." So we decided, "Well, let's build smaller houses, let's build them like pole barns." So this, this happened in, in two thousand and eight. We were building this house in Roseburg, and that was up on property above, above the airport, let's say. And, and we were just building this as a model, so that's a twenty-four by twenty-four pole barn. It's really efficient to build, to insulate. I have an office in a pole barn that I've had forever, it's in Oregon City, I'm an excavation contractor there. I, I, I find them really useful. But if you go to the next picture, we got vandalized. That's a picture taken in the same exact location of that, that like, you know, a month later. And some kids come, came up and burnt the house down. One of those kids has done some other crimes and he's now in jail, the other one, I don't know what happened to him. But when I looked at this picture, I said, "Well, they wouldn't have done it, it was made out of a shipping container." And that is literally what got me thinking, we're gonna still build small, but we're gonna build in shipping containers. And so we started Relevant Building Company. I think we go to the next one. This is, so I've talked about traffic increase and safety, in my mind anyway. I've talked about, let's talk about fire safety a little bit more. It's interesting, if you talk about, to fire, to people in fire marshals or trained in that, I get, when I have done that, in that, I get, when I have done that, I've gotten different perspectives on it. Most people tell me that, uh, they don't think a container would be any protection for, um, a fire in, in a forest, that, that a grass fire would move so fast that you could probably bunker down and get through it. I don't really know. All I know is it's not gonna be kindling when it, that it's gonna add to the fire. So when I see places burn, it's because that one house catches on fire, the next house catches on fire. I don't have a really good argument for how we keep that center section of that picture from burning, it's the same as any other house is built, right? That, that we put metal roofs on everything, we, we think there's an advantage in having them for fire. I'm not saying they're fireproof, I'm not saying you can live in one, I'm just saying they're not wood. And, uh, and so I, I've talked about fire safety as, as kind of as much as I am planning to. This, this third film is gonna talk, this third video is gonna talk about tree separation. This is kind of all about the separation with the neighbors. A lot of people here from Wild Fern and Winchester Creek are, feel that there's a, there's gonna be some value impact on houses. So you can kind of tell what's trees here and what's not. That little trail that runs to the, as I'm looking at, to the right around that connects Wild Fern to Winchester Creek is, is a, a road that's existing and, and it's kind of the path that we're taking with our road around. The next slide is just gonna show this in a fashion that you can kind of see the tree cover. These, these are areas that are heavily wooded, you can see that the houses are already built in there on, in concept on this. And so when we talk about neighborhoods, you know, it's my expectation or my plan that we'll have a gate, we'll have a gated neighborhood for these smaller houses and we will have a lot of separation between us. And I'm pretty sure if you went out there, there might be one or two sites you can see a next door neighbor from, but that's it, there's no place else. We've clearly bundled these together, so it's a lot of common open space. So we have, you know, under 30 houses and what do we have, 18 acres or something like that there?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one acres, I mean, there's, there's a lot of open space there. That is, those, those three conversations I just had represent 34 of the, of the comments that were made, right? And then, and then we start stepping down the list. The next one is access to areas they currently use for walking. I, I honestly don't know what to say about that. People walk on this property all the time and, and honestly, uh, if somebody would have come in and said, hey, can we still have access to that property, I'd have said, sure, I'm gonna build that into the system. I don't know if I feel that way after coming down here and have, have all this much lopsided of a, of an attitude about it, but, but, uh, but it's, it's private property, just like if someone says, well, you can't walk on my property, okay, I understand that. So I don't have any answer for that right now. The next one, number five on the list, we had seven comments about, was talking about density. As I said, we're zoned for 200 houses, we're gonna build less than 30. I, I don't know what, I don't, I don't have any further conversation to have about that. Alex is gonna talk about a pump station that we're modifying to manage the water on this. Uh, I think that, that's an engineering conversation that'll be better than mine. Concern about low income residents. So I restored 300-year-old buildings. I own, I own two of them still, they don't make any money, they're horrible. That one's right downtown Portland, I have, I have mostly one bedroom apartments in it and it stays full all the time. There's a lot of people that need one bedroom. Uh, there's, there's, you know, it's, it's, it's real easy and fulfilling to build large homes. It's also fulfilling to build small homes. You can see by what that film said that this isn't just a container sitting out there with two or three people living in it. These are, these are, we get comments all the time from people. We just, we just set a home in Falls City, which is west of Salem, and Joe told me, my, my son told me that the people said, Joe, we've had remodeling done and these, the quality of these is so much better than we've seen. And we hear that a lot, we, we really take pride in the quality of these. But with regard to low income residents, we don't look at it that way. When I, that, that first house, that deluxe model that we first showed was a, a two bed, one bath. That house, that first house I bought in about 1974 was a two bed, one bath house I bought for 20,000 bucks. I was chasing a low price house when I started building these things. And now what I tell you, when I said on that, that you could put that for 250 on somebody's lot, that movie was made in 2021, this is five years later, so that's, that's not even true anymore, right? And it pains me to say that. But, um, but that two bed and one bath house, as soon as we got it done, people wanted to see, I need a second bathroom. And so we, we have not yet built what we did too, we built two of those. But, but I'm still chasing that two bed, one house because I know there's a large population of baby boomers my age and younger that are, that are looking for that. Uh, next comment, had three people, need for more public comment, here we are. Uh, the, the ninth one down had three people about environmental concerns, there's always concern about environment, the fact that we're possessing such a small portion of that acreage and even the rest of it, um, you know, as it is, I think kind of speaks to our concern about the environment. And changing neighborhood character, well, right now, you know, again, my position on it is, that's, that's a piece of vacant land that people wanted to keep vacant, but I want to put houses on it. Um, and so that's kind of all I got to say.
Thank you. State your name and...
Sheriff Burke and members of the commission, uh, my pleasure to be here tonight. For the record, my name is Alex Palm. I am the principal at IE Engineering, uh, and I am the project engineer. I apologize for my scratchy voice and coughing, I just got back from my first parents weekend at the University of Arizona and came back with the fraternity flu apparently, so. I'm dealing with that a little bit. I've been designing subdivisions for Carl for 20 years. Longtime client and really proud of the work we've done over the last two decades. Uh, I would first like to remind everybody that we already have approval for a 14 lot planned, planned unit development located at this site. What we are specifically requesting is a ma, is a major amendment to that approval to modify it from 14 lots up to 28 lots. What we are requesting is allowed in the existing R1 zoning, we aren't requesting any zone change or anything that isn't outright permitted in the Douglas County Land Use and Development Ordinance. I'd like to spend a few minutes explaining to you why we are specifically asking for this amendment. In this 30 acre parcel, the limiting factor for development is water service. The site sits above the city's, uh, water service zone and it's served by the Winchester Creek Pump Station. There is no city reservoir in this area, nor is one planned. The pump station is it and that, that's all that's ever gonna serve this area. It currently serves 11 homes located at, at the end of Winchester Creek Avenue. And when it was originally designed, it was designed to serve 25 homes. So the approval we have right now for the 14 units plus 11, that's 25. That was the plan. Well, since we got that approval, we've been working diligently with the City of Roseburg Public Works Department to try to figure out a way to expand that pump station, put some new pumps in it, uh, so we could put some more houses up here. Cause you know, frankly, 14 lots on 30 acres, um, not a whole heck of a lot of development and Roseburg needs housing. So in the last few months, we were able to, again, work with the City of Roseburg, uh, Public Works Department to figure out a way to modify those pumps so we could serve 14 more houses. So the whole reason we're here in front of you today with, for the major amendment is to, uh, it is because we were able to figure that out with the City of Roseburg on that pump station. That being said, this is it for this area. We aren't gonna be able to expand the pump station anymore, nor would the city allow it. A reservoir is never gonna get built in this area because it's just not a big enough service area, the, the economics don't work. And that's one of the reasons too, why we're putting so much of this area in protected open spaces, it'll be open space forever. 28 units is, is the most we can ever put in here and it's all because of water service. Regarding the development, gosh, I was kind of laughing, uh, this morning when I was thinking about it. So I moved back to Roseburg in 2004. And the very first subdivision I designed, when I got back here, was Winchester Creek. And I, I vividly remember coming to the same commission for approval, different people, and, uh, getting all the same letters, complaints, fears from the folks on Wild Fern about Winchester Creek. Uh, that was, that was my wealth, or my introduction to the not in my backyard area, which is still with us. I am currently batting oh for a thousand presenting developments where the neighbors come and say, man, we are so excited about that. And, and, and that's fine. I mean, everybody likes that empty vacant piece of property that's right next to them and, and they want that to stay forever. But what I want to let you guys know, and I hope you can see in this, is that, you know, we knew these concerns were coming. We, we knew the letters we were gonna get and we have done everything we can to lay this out in a way that limits the impact on the folks on Wild Fern. And, and, and to be respectful of what they have and not getting into what they have. We've left a 200-foot forested buffer between what we're developing and everything on Wild Fern. We have some pictures, but when you're standing on Wild Fern, you're not gonna be able to see any of these units. The lots that are closest to Wild Fern, which on this layout would be 19 through 28, there's actually a ridge there that goes up and down that blocks any view corridors. So the folks on Wild Fern are gonna see those units, those units aren't gonna see the folks on Wild Fern, we did that purposely. We also put all this open space in there that's gonna be protected, it'll be wooded forever. We also laid this development out in a way where we are using the existing logging roads for the main roads and those logging roads were put in 40-plus years ago by the Lykins when they did some logging up there. And we did that to limit our disturbance. We are also not connecting our road to the end of Wild Fern Drive. No traffic from this development is ever gonna use Wild Fern Drive. It will all use Winchester Creek. And again, when we designed Winchester Creek in 2004, we made it wider than it needed to be, knowing that this was gonna get developed someday and that someday is today. We are gonna leave and actually improve the gate and locked gravel emergency access road that does go down into Wild Fern and we're leaving that. So no matter who you are, where you live, whether you're in this development or you're on Wild Fern, if there's a, an emergency or specifically a fire, there's two ways to get out of here for everybody. We're not, uh, impact, we're, we're, we're not connecting into their water system. We know the folks at the end of Wild Fern Drive has terrible water pressure. As I said before, this is gonna be completely served by the Winchester Creek Pump Station. It's a totally separate system, it will have no impact on anybody's water pressure and isn't even tied into their system. We're not connecting into their sewer main, so we're not gonna have any impact on that. All of this sewer is out Winchester Creek and, and when we designed Winchester Creek, we designed it specifically for that. And then drainage, drain is always an issue. So condition of approval number 11 addresses the drainage. So we have to do a drainage report. We have to show that we're gonna put in facilities that aren't gonna increase the runoff from this into the creek that runs behind a bunch of people's yards. Now for reference, the entire drainage basin here that runs down into Wild Fern is 300 acres in size. This development is 30 acres in size. Of the 30 acres, we are paving and putting rooftops on three acres. Okay, so of the whole drainage basin, we're gonna make 1% of it impervious. That 1% impervious, we will provide detention, we'll have to document it, there's rules in place, um, in the LUTO that dictate exactly how we have to design that. And again, it's, it's, it's condition number 11, so, uh, that, that's something that we've gotta do. And I just wanna, you know, once again, say that, that we really did consciously lay this out to try to limit the impacts for all the folks on Wild Fern. And, and, and I hope that can be recognized. My last comment is Roseburg needs more housing and more housing options. As a community, we don't need more million dollar houses. It would be wonderful if everybody could afford a million dollar house, but that's not reality. We need more houses in the $300,000 range that hardworking people in our community can afford, young folks moving back to our community can buy, retirees on a fixed income can afford. That is a fact. That is a fact. This subdivision will provide that type of housing. Teachers, healthcare workers, waitresses, bank tellers, you name it, are gonna live here. It's gonna be an awesome place to live. Uh, walking trails, um, if you haven't walked back there, it's in this absolute gorgeous valley and, and I'm really proud of what we've designed. So with that, we respectfully ask for your approval of this major amendment. Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I'm gonna approach it, I don't know if the City of Roseburg had anyone here, do we know?
I believe so.
And was there anyone in favor besides applicants and their representatives? We're gonna start with the opposed, again, you got a three minute time limit. Like I said, you don't need to use it all if you don't need to, if you do, that's fine. And if you're gonna basically be coming up and repeating the same thing, I just ask that you, you just say basically the same thing quickly so we can try to give everyone an opportunity. So we'll start with the first one here. So Bonnie Dowderman for Saddle Butte Estates. Apologize if I still got your last name wrong, I'm horrible with names. So again, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Dowderman and I live at 480 Wild Fern Drive, so I'm just down the street from this neighborhood. Um, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak and I want to let you know that I'm not just speaking for myself. Um, we have several of our residents here. We have an HOA with 37 homes and I speak on behalf of those 37 people, 37 owners. So thanks again for the opportunity to speak. So I didn't realize until I, I met with Alex Palm Lex last week and I didn't realize how traumatized he was by our, our neighbors back when the Winchester Creek development came through. We, we did express concerns back then and we, you know, we've expressed them today and you've got some of that stuff in front of you, you've got the, the written information. So I want to say to Alex, thank you so much for your time to meet with us. The main concerns that we talked about, you know, I, I went through my list and my concerns that I presented on paper and I, I basically just, you know, went through all of those with Alex and he responded to those questions and I really appreciate it. And I think one thing that really helps in this situation is having more information and knowing what this development is all about. Um, so I think a lot of us were concerned because we didn't really know what it was gonna look like and what, what the design was all about and all those kind of things. And so I appreciate, uh, Carl, your information that you provided today and that really helps us all understand a little bit better. So when we met with Alex, uh, the main concern that I had left for him was the drainage issues and one of our neighbors here tonight has had numerous, you know, her backyard is just ditches basically of all the drainage coming down through her property. And so I really appreciate Alex's ti, time, excuse me, to, um, go through that with us and to understand what the concerns are. And so he mentioned that it's possible to kind of reroute the water and filter, you know, send it into a culvert and avoid our neighbors' backyards and, and all that kind of stuff. So we're not gonna have any more, uh, hopefully, not any...
Detention basin.
Yes, detention basin, yeah, well, I learned that. Did I? Maybe I learned it, anyway. Um, so, so he's, what he's saying is, you know, to hold back the rainwater and to try not to have it all coming down, you know, just down into our neighbors' yards. And so it all has to go in the creek, we all understand that, but to have these, um, you know, sort of catch basins holding the water back. So I hope that those, uh, changes we discussed will be written into the plans, that they'll be part of your, um, you know, future plans going forward. Um, and then also the other concern we had was about the rec, recreational areas and kind of putting them a little bit farther away. And so it's great that we may not see these, um, these neighbors, um, but you hear them, you know, we, we hear our neighbors on Winchester Creek and I'm sure they hear us, but you know, it's helpful if you could have those recreational areas moved. So again, we appreciate Alex's time. So again, we appreciate Alex's time. And then my other my other question for you guys, and I'm not sure how to present this. It's not really, you know, necessarily opposition, but it's just a request for more information. You know, what are the HOA rules in that would be in place? Are these owner occupied? Who owns the land? Is it all gonna be rentals? That kind of thing? We'd like to know. Is that time? And then the other question is who's gonna build them? Are they all built by relevant or would there be other builders that would be able to come in there? We just don't have a lot of information about it. So we would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one will be Malcolm D. May. He's not here? Dennis and Fran Strack. Are they here? No? Okay. Dorothy Bear? Okay, yeah, come on up. State your name and your address and.
Well, I'm not Dorothy.
Think she made that very clear.
Tim Bear, and I reluctantly serve as president of the HOA for Winchester Creek. I've been involved building six homes on Winchester Creek, licensed contractor as well as a real estate agent. We've lived there seven years. I know Carl. It's nothing against Carl. He's a great guy. Consider him a friend. And we knew when we we bought the lots in Winchester Creek that there was gonna be development on up Winchester Creek. My concern are, and some of them have been already stated, are when Winchester Creek was put in. We have a fourteen hundred square foot minimum size home that we could be built, okay? And that, but it it would be actually, it's uh it's bigger than that, eighteen hundred and forty square feet, single level. Fourteen hundred and fifty if it's a two-story. They're on half acre lots, but the lots are very challenging to build on. All those lots sold in two thousand and five, or most of them did. After we moved in, built a home at the end of Winchester Creek, I got to know Carl. He was gracious enough to do a lot line adjustment so we could actually get a driveway into the lot that we had. A lot of the, you know, the roadway is wide. It's a great street. The problem being, a lot of the homes that are built on there, they don't have parking off the street. So you're gonna have parking on both sides of the street for a lot of these homes because of the steepness going on the on the north side of the property of the street that runs down to the creek. It's very steep. And on the south side, it's it's hill ground and it's really steep. And some of those honestly lots will probably never be built on because of the challenging and the cost to go in there and develop those lots. In being involved in building six homes on this street, I was pretty frustrated with eye engineering and the way they were laid out. Just because the difficulty to build on some of these lots. The concern that I have on 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 up the on up the creek or on up the street. Carl's proposed development of these tiny homes is, one, valuations. I mean, most of the homes up Winchester Creek are probably valued between half a million and a million dollars, okay? You can't tell me it's not gonna impact valuation of those homes moving forward. Are the home, these tiny homes or container homes that are gonna be built, are they gonna sell those lots? Or are they going to lease the lot? And I don't feel like they're gonna be very affordable if they're going to lease those lots. It's gonna be like a a a nice mobile home park.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And water pressure is an issue now. And it's gonna be worse. And I hope the city of Roseburg can do something about it because in the last six months, there's probably been six occasions where we have really low water pressure now.
Thank you. Just so many people, just to give everyone a fair opportunity. I know. CJ and Sean Hyde. Can I apologize if I did not get your name totally correct?
I just wanna ask a question because based on.
State your name and address.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm really bad at all this stuff. CJ Hyde, I'm at five seven two Wild Fern, so I'm like real pretty close there.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, looking at the lot sizes, I I understand that, you know, we looked at one of the bigger ones, you know, mostly. And yes, he's he showed a lot of the smaller ones. I guess my question is based on the lot sizes. What's the proportion of the much smaller ones to the larger ones? Would we be have? So like Bonnie was saying, I'd like more information. I'd like to know that. And of course, everything, you know, everything else. And also too, just a quick question. I know they're metal, but you said there was stick built in the middle, so therefore that would still be a fire hazard. Not that, you know, any house is gonna be a fire hazard, but I was just wondering about that. So just more information. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you. So Caroline Williams?
My name is Carolyn Williams and I live at six oh one Wild Fern Drive. I didn't know I was on the list to speak, so. Which is alright. We've talked a little bit about the concerns and I wished I would have brought some pictures to show you what my concern is. And I'm not worried about getting new neighbors so much as I'm worried about the drainage. I'm the one that has the ditch that's twelve feet deep that keeps sloughing off my property. I've lost several feet of property. And and this, I believe, is the second, a different place for the culvert. And so it brings water even from the south where the culvert used to be. It was mostly from the east. And now it's bringing more water because it's coming from the south as well as from the east because it's all been directed to the one culvert. And so, yes, you expect to have rain, rain, big storms. But my concern was with all the with all the pavement and everything, that more water is gonna be coming down to that culvert. And I keep losing property because it it goes down there because obviously the water goes down there. So if there's a way to mitigate that, and we've talked to Alex and he was very cordial and and understanding. But I'm still I'm still concerned that even a pond, holding pond is gonna keep enough water away. And I don't know if it can be directed to anywhere else, but that's that's my biggest concern is that I keep losing property. And that's mainly the concern. Thank you.
Thank you. So Bruce Scott. Can you state your name and address again?
Bruce Scott, four oh two Martha, and I'm a little bit farther down Strauss. And I have a couple of concerns. One is the traffic. Right now, it is terrible. People probably know me. They see me walking my dogs twice a day. I have two little wiener dogs. I'm out there all the time, but it's scary on the route. It's a twenty-five mile an hour zone and it's fifty mile an hour a lot of times. And people don't like me. I'll get in front of them. I get flipped off. I get all kinds of stuff and it's not pretty. So we have to figure out something about the traffic. The other thing I'm concerned about is our property value. My wife and I moved in there in two thousand and two. They were all custom-built homes, forestoned, built a lot of them, but it was called Lichen Land. Glenda Lichen was head of the HOA. There was about ten pages of them, all the rules and stuff. And that's the reason we moved there. You couldn't even paint your house without the committee telling you if you wanted to change the color of the roof. So many square foot, a lot of stuff. You couldn't park vehicles on the street more than twenty-four hours. RVs had to be behind a gate or hidden back end, stuff like that. And I just don't wanna see my property value go down. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Whitworth?
Barry Whitworth at two sixteen Strauss. I'm gonna talk about Page Road. Why talk about Page Road? Because it leads to Thor's Circle. When Thor's Circle was built, that was the only access to Thor's Circle. The major access to Thor's Circle these days is Strauss. Whoever planned Strauss decided the street was okay, not put sidewalks. Maybe that saved the developer a ton of money. So no sidewalks up Strauss, period. There are seven cul-de-sacs off Strauss. There are no sidewalks. The dog walking community, the Bruces of our neighborhood, walk around all the time. The only sidewalk between Stevens and the top of Winchester Creek is the start of Winchester Creek. And the developer there put the sidewalk on right hand side heading up the hill. People walk these these roads a lot. Now, why do I mention Thor's Circle? Just as Bruce says, if we're coming from town, or excuse me. If I was a Thor's Circle resident coming from town, he's not gonna go down past the post office to to Page, particularly not in the last year. Why? Because now Strauss, Page has gone from a thirty-five mile an hour street at the beginning before Thor's Circle to a twenty-five mile an hour street. And it's twenty during school hours. So they say, well, why do I wanna go down there and drive when I can drive forty, fifty miles an hour up Strauss? We know the people on Thor's Circle go up Strauss and Astor, they go up Strauss, simply because we walk the neighborhood and we see, oh, that's the red car that went by me that Bruce flipped off the other day doing fifty. Now, let's talk about the development. I walked the development the other day, right to the very top, right to the end of the property, on the right hand side. The first side has got the the concrete, what do you wanna call it, drainage curbing and it's pre-made by the concrete guys. I went up the other side and we talked about fire. I lived on Rich Crest Drive, which is way above the movie theaters for thirty years. We had one fire on Maria Drive and the building was halfway down before the fire engine got there. Why? Because it's steep. Well, if you go up Winchester Creek, before you get to the gravel where it is now, and let's presume it's all gonna be paved, is it gonna be paved? All of it gonna be paved? Okay. To go up the second route where the additional homes are gonna be built, that is steep. I walked it and I ride a bicycle a lot, so I know what if. And six to ten percent graded and it's all of that, fire engines will not get there before the place has a chance to burn, okay? It's Carl, the builder. Carl's showing us good-looking properties. In fact, totally surprised me what you can do with a container home. To find that was a container home, I was surprised. He's got a seventeen hundred and sixty square foot, three bedroom, two bedroom. What would be the price of that home? Okay, what's the price of the lot? The developer develops a place, doesn't know what his what his house is gonna cost because he's he's the builder, doesn't know what his lot's gonna cost and needs the developer. Thank you very much.
Robert Rip. Can you state name and address if you would?
Uh, Robert Rippey, one one five Martha Drive. Our driveway is on Strauss. And that's my main concern that that other guys have already voiced it. There is no sidewalks in the neighborhood. Everybody walks it in the street, rides their bikes out in the street. And people do, I know it's not the developer's fault or any fault of you guys, but people do fly up and down that damn road all the time. And and that's our complaint was, you know, it looked like beautiful units, be proud to live in one, but we're concerned about the traffic. And that's that's the gist of it for for me and my wife anyway. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
There are twenty-eight to twenty-nine built homes on Winchester Creek. Twenty-eight additional homes will have one and a half cars.
Okay, sir. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Tim Bear?
Here it is.
Nope, oh, sorry. Now, now he's gonna be Dorothy. Yeah, he can just come up and say Dorothy. Beth Griffin?
I'm Beth Griffin. I live at one ten Wild Fern Drive and I'm here to tell you what it's like to live at the bottom of the hill. I am bordered by gray squirrel, Wild Fern and Page. And there's a drainage ditch in front of my house. There's drainage below me on Page Road. That even in a moderate rainfall right now is just gushing debris is coming down surface and through the ditch. And it's flooding my property regularly. It's flooded so bad that it's gone across Page and down into the neighbors below me. And I've reported this to the county several times and they did come out at some point and put some rocks in there to try to slow the water flow. But the whole thing needs to be modified and, you know, made modern and then maintained. I don't think it can handle more surface water or water through our current drainage. Now, I've heard about the creek, but that's on the other side of the road from me, so I just wanted to share my concerns with you and hope that with a project like this, even if it's approved, that there's consideration for that. Because like Carolyn, I'm, that ditch is just eroding my property on two sides. Or actually down the back too, but that's off of gray squirrel. So I, you know, I can mention that, but it's not directly related to this. But the rest I believe is, and thank you.
Thank you. Angela Olinger?
Hi, I'm Angela Olinger. I live on Wild Fern Drive. I'd just like to say respectfully, I don't think he is in compliance with chapter four dot one dash zero, the adjoining roads. I think what people are talking about going down Winchester Creek, you have to drive down Winchester Creek quite a ways before you hit the adjoining road. I'm not sure what what you guys want as far as that's concerned, but I picture an adjoining road sitting at a stop sign and then turning left and right. You have options when you're coming out of the subdivision and there's no option but to go straight at this point. If you turn right onto a gravel road, then you'll go down to, you know, Wild Fern Drive. But there are no adjoining roads, so I'm not quite sure how he's meeting that requirement. That's just my opinion. I'm not an attorney. Also, the school capacity, there's a chapter six that talks a little bit about submitting a a plan. I'm sorry, Alex, but that should have been submitted and I I didn't see anything to that effect, but I don't know. It it's a study that says how the children in the community will impact, the new children in the community will impact the school. And that hasn't been submitted. So technically, that gives all of you guys the the legal right to decline this amendment request. At least temporarily until we could figure out something a little better as far as the container homes. Because I'm concerned they won't sell for three hundred thousand. I think that I've seen a lot of homes that are better and bigger and prettier out at Cooper Creek in Sutherland that are sitting empty and they're three hundred thousand. And they're beautiful looking homes. You just need to do a little bit of work on the inside. So I think the marketing is a little off, but the planning looks good and everything else could be tweaked. Because I think Alex will work miracles for for Mr. Kaufman here, but I don't think that marketing will sell. And I think they'll end up sitting empty and probably have to do section eight because I don't see even pulling in three hundred thousand. They're beautiful. But I think he's got Vancouver real estate eyes and it's not Douglas County. We're the fifth largest county in the 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 state. And it doesn't make sense to stack people on top of each other. I understand he has to do that for building purposes. But it's not what I think Douglas County is about. I think we have more land than that and we could do better than that. And if we just take a little bit of time to think about how that could happen, we could use him as the builder, fine. We could, I think that's great. Fireproof homes, but they ha- it has to be done right. So I just, I'd like to take a minute, take a reprieve. Go ahead and and not approve it and see if we can come up with a better, more marketable home, larger. Not not ADU. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Richard and Janice Wilken? Are they here? No? Leonard and Terry Huffman?
I'm Leonard Huffman. I live at four-thirty-seven Winchester Creek Avenue, and reluctantly I serve on the HOA board. And all, most of our concerns have been stated already. My biggest concern is going to be my value of my home. The street is not nearly as wide as this gentleman has made it out to be when you get traffic, when you got cars parked on it. An extra forty to fifty vehicles up and down that street every day, who knows how many times. It's not going to be the best neighborhood to be in anymore. So one of the reasons why we bought our house up there is because it was a nice, peaceful, low-traffic, quiet neighborhood. Far as water pressure, we have terrible water pressure up there. Every time we lose power, they have problems with the pumps. It's, yeah, anyway.
And we're from Myrtle Point, too.
Awesome.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Frank Messer? Todd and Christian Coens? Ryan and Kim Dustine?
Dunston.
Dunston? Jim and Mary Evans?
I'll pass Bonnie Donovan.
Sublinked, okay. Okay. Gary and Denise DeLong? Eric and Shannon Johnson? Christina Scott? Okay, and David and Victoria Hawks? Okay? Okay, this time we'll give the applicant an opportunity if he would like to come up and give a rebuttal.
So, you know, I, I almost feel like I should turn around and face the audience here, you guys, because I understand, I understand all the concerns, and, um, and I'm not adversarial to anybody here. I just have, I, I, I look at it like this. I feel like I'm, I'm a really part of the lucky generation. I know a guy that fought the chosen reservoir of Korean War, which started a little bit, about a year before I was born. I was in, uh, senior in high school when they, uh, when they closed down the Vietnam War, and they didn't have to go there. And I was too old to get anything else by the time it came along, so I feel like I was a really lucky generation. I think, uh, I, I feel really strongly that climate change is, is the biggest, biggest beast coming at us, and I, and I, and I'm afraid of what AI means to jobs. I really feel strongly that, you know, our era of building bigger and bigger houses and, and riding that wave, it, it's just so expensive. I know, I know they're expensive in Rosenberg, they're just different expensive than they are in the Portland area. I told, said this earlier, when I, my starter home was a twenty thousand dollar home, just under twenty grand. And now a starter home in, in Portland area is three fifty, at least. And it just, it just, it, it makes me feel bad. I'm, I'm intent on building something smaller, and, uh, and I think, and I, and I hear when someone says it's, I understand, so the different, the, I'm going to try to answer some questions here. It's my intent to sell these homes. I don't want to own a bunch of rentals, I don't want to have a mobile home park with, with houses that I built on it. These are all just fee simple homes like everybody else's. With valuations, I promise I will not complain if Winchester Creek pulls evaluations of our houses down. But I don't think we'll pull theirs down either. I think we're separate, uh, locations, and I, I think it's independent, it will be gated. I think, I, I will tell you, we built, we built a container home for some people that now, you know, people, different locations buy different things. I'll, I'll grant you that. I don't know, I don't know what these will sell for. But I, I'm expecting to be, I don't know what, I don't know what I'm expecting to be. They're, they're expensive to build, the land's expensive, the development's expensive. I've got ten thousand a lot into these already, just, just, just to get to here tonight with engineering and, and, and looking at different things. And my first house cost twenty thousand for the whole thing, I haven't even turned a piece of dirt yet. And that doesn't pay for any of the land yet. So, you know, it's hard, and, and it's not hard on me. I'm, 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 I'm just doing this because I want to finish this piece off to, to move on. So they're going to be owned. I don't think they're going to affect valuations. I don't think they're going to affect it any more than any other, any other place you drive by to get to your place. I don't think going past this to get to the next place is going to change anything. I said earlier that I don't think that we are fireproof, but I feel like we are less kindling, and, and I think that's what happens, is one house burns and the next house burns. If there's, if anything, it's, all of our roofs are made of metal, we don't have eaves that draw cinders up into them to an attic. Uh, and I, they're just different. And I, and I'm not saying they're fireproof, it's not code requirement to be fireproof. That's why we have to put fire hydrants in. But, you know, but we have that little advantage. The drainage, you know, you're, uh, people that, that are talking about drainage, I'm sorry about that. And, and I know that Alex said we're going to be changing the dynamics of that basin by one percent. I'm sorry about that one percent, but, but again, you have to understand, we're going to be putting about twelve percent of the houses that were entitled to be built there. We're not asking for any special building, something much, much smaller than, than almost any other developer I can possibly imagine would come down there and, and want to do. All of our houses will be at least two bedrooms, so we'll have two-bedroom, one-bath houses. We're doing that because, uh, I, again, I'm trying to really focus on people that need a place to live. And I don't mean necessarily, I mean retired people. I don't mean people that are indigent, I don't mean people that are homeless. I'm not trying to save the world in that direction. We, we, we build containers for homeless villages that are going in Portland. We're doing nine of them for a homeless village right now. And, and, but that's not what we're building down here. Somebody asked me about costs. I've developed literally over a thousand building lots, and I have guessed at the cost of them until I finally said, I'm just going to quit guessing, because I never, I never know what it is. I know this, though, I know that I've made money because of appreciation every time. I don't think that's right, but I know that that's how, that has worked for me. I would start thinking this is going to be forty thousand dollar lots, and by the time we got them built, they were sixty thousand dollar lots. And so it didn't matter what I thought they were going to be. And honestly, I don't know what these are going to be. I've heard talk about sidewalks, I just want to say again, that, that was a voluntary sidewalk that we put in. I wish they were every place, we need more public transportation, I'll support that all the time. Traffic is another, 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 you know, bugaboo. There's a thirty-acre parcel of property at the end of the road that you can put two hundred houses on it, we're going to put thirty on it. I don't know what else to say about that, we can't make it any smaller. Marketability. That couldn't be my writing. Honestly, I don't know if we're going to sell container homes up there or not, either. But I'm going to try, we're going to build three of them and see. And if that doesn't work, we'll build stick houses, that they're going to be living units. They're going to be similar sizes anyway, whether they're container homes or not. I think these will make sense, but we'll see. And, and I think that's my feedback for the, for the comments.
Carl, I have one question for you. Have you guys looked at or contacted Save Rosenberg about, seen about the speed limit there? Because that's one common theme here throughout this, and I don't know, have you guys looked at that? As, as far as lowering the speed limit on that main road?
I have speed limits, I'm already twenty-five miles an hour.
And it's county road, Strauss.
So it is county, okay.
And we've had problems, John Hanlon used to live by me, and I've talked with him many times, known him forever, and they've tried and do stuff, but they're so limited, they can't patrol it anymore.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Carl.
We've had the, the, the speed limit, you know, monitor tells you what you're, several different times, so.
And one other comment, I want to say, up Winchester Creek, he put street nightlights up there, which is great. But Strauss on down to the bottom, on the bottom last two hundred feet, there's streetlights, but there's nothing in between them. So it's totally dark.
Got you, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Just one.
I, I found about, I found out about this entire deal five days ago. So how, how, how does this, uh, this project of this magnitude not get in the mail from the county to each individual resident, particularly me, because I'm, my front door is on Strauss?
Okay, thank you. Jeff, you want to speak to that just briefly, to give us kind of a little bit of the process and how this works? I know you've explained it, just give us kind of a basic rundown.
Sure. The requirements for notification that are in place for Oregon is that the, uh, requests like this, it's in an urban area, the notification distance is properties that are within one hundred feet. If it's rural land, it's two hundred and fifty feet, if it's resource land, it's seven hundred and fifty feet. So that's, uh, that process was followed with this request, as all of, all of our requests are, so.
That would mean the first house inside Winchester Creek at the very top, which is Tim's house. So the only person, would be the only house that would get a, a notification that this development is taken.
We've gone through the process, so, so at this point, I'm going to call point of order. So if you'd like to come out and speak on behalf of the rebuttal, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, I just got three quick, quick notes. First, I did just send Jared Corden, the superintendent of our school district, a text message, asking him if he had any concerns about, uh, school enrollment here. And his text message response was Winchester enrollment is three hundred and thirty-seven, I am not worried about enrollment there. Second comment is, I did go and meet with Carolyn in her backyard, she's the last house up there, and it's, yeah, there's a lot, a lot happening there, uh, and, and we can, we can fix that, uh, when we finish our design on this. I'm, I'm confident of that. And third comment, uh, Tim Bear's criticism of our design on Winchester Creek is absolutely warranted. We should have padded out all those lots. I, we, I, I have lost sleep over that, uh, and, um, so I'll, I will apologize for that. We, we, we did not make things easy for you on that, so I'm sorry. That's all I have to say.
Must be a beer there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so at this time, I'm going to close the public portion, and we'll deliberate to decision, or if we have questions for staff. I had just a couple of questions. Jeff, if folks want more information, what is the best way for them to get that information?
Any part of the record is public, so at any point in time, we would, we would look into the record. Specific questions can be asked of the applicant. Some of the questions related to, um, what type of housing is not part of the approval criteria. So if those questions were asked of staff, we would just simply recognize that this is just dividing the land. So it, it just depends on the type of questions, and so sometimes we might have said, here's what's being requested, it's a division of the land, and that's under chapter four, here's the requirements, it's a unique request, um, of a planned development versus standard lot by lot, so here's that criteria. Any other questions, you know, we might have directed to the applicant. But that could have happened once the notice went out, and, you know, we wanted to refer this to a hearing rather than make the staff level decision based on the comments that we did receive.
Okay, gotcha. So this is kind of phase one, so as far as getting more information out to those folks, because that was one of the common things I kind of heard here, is, is people just wanted to know what's going on. They want to know, you know, what it is and what it looks like. And I guess I would encourage you guys, you know, depending on what happens and how we rule, is try to get that information out there to those folks. You know, I, I heard the drainage piece was brought up over and over again, it sounds like you guys are working some of that. The speed issue, you know, it's funny, because I've seen, uh, you know, you build big, wide streets, and the problem is, is people speed on them. Uh, you build narrow streets, and you put people on them, and you put people parking on them, and guess what? They go slower. So it's this kind of this, uh, I don't know, it, it's a, it's a weird quandary. I've seen it myself happen in that, but I, I still would encourage to see if there's a way we could try to get that speed solved. I don't know if there's speed humps, speed bumps, we've already closed the public portion, sorry, sir. But some kind of traffic calming maybe in there to get those people to slow down. So that, that's my comment, um, to staff and to you guys, and, and I'll open up to the rest of the commissioners.
So I know our hands are tied on a lot of this. One of the questions I have, I guess, is dwelling size. There is a minimum requirement, correct?
Sixty-five hundred on the lot size.
So dwelling size?
Yeah, the square feet of the dwelling itself.
That's something that's regulated through the building code, and it's not part of the land use component. So again, we're looking at the land division and meeting the criteria to divide the property. What constitutes a single-family dwelling, which is a permitted use in the zone? That could be whatever meets building code. So that could be a manufactured dwelling, that could be a house made out of straw. That could be a certain four thousand square foot house, it could be a nine hundred square foot, um, haven type dwelling. But it all is, what's, what we're approving on a property would be a single-family dwelling, and then what that dwelling is size-wise or style has to meet the building code requirements.
Right, but looking down the road, they're going to have to at least meet that.
Absolutely.
So it, it can't be, what some people refer to as tiny homes is very, very tiny. And, and this is not, it, it can't head that direction, so. If I could, I had one question, then that, that two-bedroom, one-bath, you said was the minimum size you anticipate there. How many square feet was that one? Because I was trying to write some of this stuff down, and there was so many different sizes, I was kind of lost there.
I'm going to, I'm going to say, you know, honestly, I'd have to look on our website, because that's where a lot of information is. Probably seven hundred feet.
Thank you.
Seven fifty-six.
And Jeff, remind me, so we can make sure we're clear too, is, is our job, looking at this, is for the major plan amendment, and that is going from the fourteen lots to the twenty-eight lots, correct? That's kind of what we're looking at tonight. Now, obviously, there's different factors into that, but is that?
That, that is what's before you, and again, Josh, uh, the staff planner, you know, in the staff report identified that the approval criteria that you're looking at is from chapter four for the subdivision requirements, and chapter five for the planned unit development. So planned unit development, uh, for example, one of the big requirements of that is the open space. So just to give you an idea, that's one of the main, main things that someone is having to do as a trade-off for, uh, planned development versus conventional lot by lot.
So one thing, what is the maximum that could be potentially built on that land?
Well, as, as the applicant stated, if you were to look at the acreage and the R-one zone, and the R-one zone allowing for sixty-five hundred square foot lots, you could have a lot of lots, which sounds like you calculated two hundred, but you have, sometimes.
I put in the staff report a hundred and fifty-six.
Hundred and fifty-six.
And it takes in twenty-five percent for streets.
Okay.
Right, and that's a good point, is that your, your raw land doesn't factor in the infrastructure, doesn't factor in slopes. In this case, you have a limitation on water that may prevent that from being ever built out further.
I have a question on our authorities with the HOA, because it's referenced. Well, one, I wanted to just acknowledge, there's twenty conditions already identified that cover, uh, a lot of everyone's concerns. Twenty conditions is not a normal list of conditions. But I did just note that the, that, and I'm curious about the, the, yeah, the influence or jurisdiction that Planning Commission has on an HOA and a planned development, this is new for me, the notion of a planned development. So, and I'm specifically thinking, I appreciate your comments about you intending to be fee simple, but I don't know how it, it's even, and I also appreciate the comment that you don't know what's going to be built up there. And that's how, how I'm looking at this, is you, there's this, the third change to this property in, in the history of it being, uh, zoned this way. the, the zone this way, so I'm of the mindset that we're talking about just so many lots and, that's really essentially it. If you stick built homes, that's to be determined. There's nothing locking that in. Now I'm just waxing eloquently. I'm curious on, do we have jurisdiction on, on HOAs? From this, is that part of our jurisdiction?
As far as, if your question is, does your review as a planning commission extend into the, HOAs that are being created?
Yeah.
No, that is, that is something the developer can choose how they're going to regulate. There are conditions of approval that dictate, um, how they maintain the roads, how they maintain the open space and some other things that, but it, like any subdivision, they can choose how simple or how robust those CCNRs might be. As to whether or not you have an architectural committee paying to style. You know, you can go clear to that or you can just simply say, um, there's no chickens allowed and no mobile homes. And I've seen a, all kinds from in between the two extremes.
And that's not part of our?
That's something the developer is going to come up with and make sure that in creating those CCNRs, they incorporate the requirements of chapter four and or chapter five as applicable. Does that answer your question?
It does, yeah.
So, so Jeff did the, uh, building department create all these conditions? Or do those come from, I mean, there's, I, I, Jacob, uh, hit on the subject that I, these are a lot of conditions. I don't know if we've ever had this many before, uh, that had to be met for the approval.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's, um, fairly typical with a request like this where you have an urban subdivision or in this case planned development, that there are, uh, a lot of conditions of approval.
And I, and I think pretty much every concern I heard, heard here tonight is going to address to this. I mean, that they're going to have to meet. Other than the speed limit.
Well, and the other observation I have on the traffic is unfortunately, a lot of those concerns are not on this property. They're, they're downstream already. So while I appreciate more makes more. We can't undo, that genie's out of the, out of the bottle. That's kind of how I feel and I, I don't know that, that, that just is outside of. Yeah, the, in this jurisdiction, so it's compliant with all those rules.
No, I think it falls under the heading of, if we'd have known then what we know now, we might have done things different. Um, on that planning as far as street width and sidewalks.
Or if just people were decent neighbors and followed the rules, that would be fine too.
Sure. Michael, any input or any questions or?
I'm comfortable with the, the presentation.
How about, how about you, Brent?
It, it's a question for both sides. It is.
Yeah, it, I'm sorry. It's closed at this point. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brent.
No, I think, uh, everything that I had was answered.
Okay. And just so folks, um, there's a distinct process that we have to go through as a planning commission. And we're not the end of the road. Um, regardless of what happens here, there is a next step and that would go to the board of commissioners. So this, whatever decision happens here can be appealed. Um, so you just know that. Um, this is just part of that process, so. At this point, I'd be needing more discussion.
Clarifying question, this is nitpicky, but, uh, condition six states that slopes thirteen percent or greater, is it thirteen or twelve percent? I thought I had read that it was twelve percent.
There's two different standards.
So it is thirteen. Okay.
Well, condition number six is recognizing, um, thirteen percent or greater, that there's a need for an engineering geologist or engineer who certifies qualification to evaluate the slopes. And then there's a condition related where you, where you mentioned twelve percent is from the drainage conditions. So there's two different sets of criteria. Um, I would note for the record that condition number six is related to the urban growth management agreement between the city and the county. So it's, uh, separate standard than the ordinance. So it's a, in, in addition to our land use and development ordinance where we have this shared urban growth management agreement with the city. So that's a higher standard from the, uh, agreed upon, the growth management agreement.
Thank you for that. Welcome to our explanation.
The end of the discussion. Otherwise I'd be looking for a motion. One way or the other.
I move that we accept the staff recommendation with the twenty patients as presented for decision file twenty-five oh-two-four.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll sign it down.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So we will move on to the next. Now, this would be an opportunity if I had business from the audience. So if you had something you'd like to say real quick, come on up.
And not related to this?
Yes, it, yeah, and it, I guess it's Jeff said.
In Strauss, um, the reason that I mentioned page, I'll go back to that, is because it's not the speed. It's the volume. The volume on Strauss has doubled without an additional thirty-eight, twenty, thirty-eight developments? Twenty, twenty, excuse me. The development wants to do twenty-eight lots, typical American homes that have one and a half cars or more. That's additional forty cars up and down there at least twice a day. It's the volume. It's not the speed. It's just the volume.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Bruce Constance, again, something both sides need to look at, and I just happen to think, uh, we still get our mail at the post office. They do some home delivery or in boxes, but the post office can't handle what they're getting now because UPS lost their Amazon contract that went to the post office Tuesday. The lady at the post office told me it was their biggest day they've ever had since they've been there, and they don't know what they're going to do. So it's something to consider. They might need to be involved in this. It, it's, it's bad.
Thank you. Yep, you got one more. Come on up.
Can I say one more thing?
Yep.
Um, we just amended, I'm sorry, this is Bonnie Dowdman, uh, four eighty Wildfern Drive. We just amended our saddlebowed estates to, um, rules, our, our bylaws from nineteen eighty-three. And we, um, wrote in a clause that, that restricted the, um, the, houses there to be owner occupied so that no one could rent. We could do, we could not do short term or long term. We do have one long-term rental that, um, is on our street and we sort of grandfathered that one in. Um, that's a case where a house is not being very well maintained. But I would respectfully ask that if you're writing, um, Carl, if you're writing the, uh, the DCNRs for your HOA, could you please consider not allowing rentals? Is that something you would please entertain? Thank you.
Any other business from the audience? Go ahead.
Angie Olinger, Angie Olinger again. I just wanted to reiterate that I don't think the homes would sell. I apologize. Your homes are beautiful, but the square footage is really unappealing. And I can't imagine any woman wanting to live in seven hundred square feet, let alone a family. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
I would love to. Okay, um, business from the planning commission.
They didn't want to have anything. I, I, I just wanted to mention quickly about the, uh, meeting we're supposed to have at three o'clock today. If there's some way we could get a little more notice, that would be dandy. I mean, I, I can tell you, I've got my calendar booked out for the next two months. Um, if we could just get, uh, more. So I, it's not like I don't want to come to. I, it just, I was happy today, so.
Sure. Yeah, um.
You want to plan it for next month?
We are gonna, we're, yep. So we're going to talk about those land use and development ordinance amendments at the November meeting.
So we do three o'clock?
And we'll skip, we'll skip any kind of workshop. So we're, we're just going to, and I'm going to mail out. We already had a revision from what you received, very minor. It was just some other statutory, um, changes regarding, there's a provision for, housing and just some changes to the legislative process. It's changed the ORS numbering. Um, but I'll get those to you in advance and then we'll have some time to look at them. So rather than workshop, we'll, and this is how we used to do it in the past. We'd just come right to a hearing and talk about them in the hearing and review them and you'd have your recommendation. So that's, that's what's on the agenda for November.
Jeff and I talked about it briefly and he felt like most of this is pretty cookie cutter, I mean, as far as it's coming from the state legislature. If we had something we didn't like at that point, we could still table it this next meeting. So it's not like we're just rubber stamping something. We'd still have the ability to.
It's not going to be regular meeting time.
Yes.
But we're going to have the workshop.
Nope, no.
Must be a hearing.
Yep, just right.
Straight to the hearing. That's what I was saying, if there is concerns, he's going to send it out prior. So if you get it, read it, you have questions, get ahold of Jeff. If not, we can talk about it at the hearing. If we don't like something or something we want to table, we can postpone the meeting, but if not, then that would be our first hearing. Okay, for, does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah. There's so many changes. I, I know if you're in it all day, it doesn't probably feel the same, or maybe it does, but it's hard to keep up with.
Um, any other input from the planning commission? Okay, uh, planning department.
Well, kind of already just touched on it with, uh, uh, and there, there is technically still a few days left, but I don't think we've really had any, uh, land use inquiries that would lead to anything else being on the agenda. So that's looking like that's all it's going to be for November is to come and talk about the amendments.
Does that mean no subway since we're doing it?
I know, I, I was waiting.
I'll buy you subway.
I was waiting. Katie and I were joking about, I was like, oh, Tim's gonna be so upset about not getting a subway.
I'll buy you lunch, buddy.
I just, I had to throw it out there because I didn't get a chance. I, I was telling her.
So next meeting we'll have.
Looked at that. I was like, oh, I gotta think of something funny in it.
Yeah.
That's why I couldn't come is a subway.
Yes, right. Yeah, we'll, we'll have, uh, finance a fact for this, uh, also, yes.
All right. Well, if you don't have anything, anything else coming up or has it been pretty quiet? No rock pits, uh, you know, no, uh, solar farms. Come on, Jeff, wind farms. We haven't seen wind farm.
No, um, pretty.
Done dog kennels.
About another horse, horse training.
Pretty quiet. You might've, you might've jinxed us. We'll, we'll find out.
That being said, uh, meeting adjourned.